Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me call to order the September 23rd, 2019 meeting. We have Pastor Rocky Pugh with us today from Emmanuel Baptist Church over on Ziegler Boulevard. He's going to give us, open us up with prayer. And we're going to do a quick pledge and then we're going to jump right into business. So, please rise.
Let's pray together. Well, Father, you tell us in your word that when Solomon began to lead your people, he could have asked for anything, asked for power, for wealth, but instead he asked for wisdom, and that not for his own glory, but for the good of your people. Father, you also tell us in your word, in James, that if we lack wisdom, that we'll come to you and ask because you give generously. Father, that we should believe that you'll give generously, not asking with doubt, but with complete faith, so that we won't be double-minded men and women unstable in all that we do. And Father, when we see your wisdom, we ought to be quick to obey it. Father, that's the wisdom that we ask for today, that I ask for on behalf of these in this room, on behalf of Commissioner Lugood, Commissioner Carl, Commissioner Hudson. Father, we ask for your wisdom for the good of your people. We want to be good neighbors to everyone in Mobile County. Father, help us to do that, not for our own glory, not so that our name would be great, but so that your name would be great. And again, for the good of your people, Father. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We have a number of elected officials in here, so all I can say is welcome. I can barely see. I see Sheriff Cochran and Nick Matranga. Am I missing anybody else? Okay. Well, if I missed you, I'm sorry. Welcome. Y'all must be here because it's budget time. Okay. All right. Let's see what we've got first here. Do we have anything?
Resolution.
Resolution?
We have a resolution. We do not have any speakers this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd like to ask Kim Thompson Yates from USA Children's and Women's Hospital to come forward. We will be presenting a resolution in acknowledgment of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The resolution for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month for September of 2019 reads, "Whereas September has been designated as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to remember those who have lost their lives to cancer and honor the courageous children who bring unwavering strength and optimism to their fight against cancer every single day. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday. More than 10,000 children are diagnosed with cancer annually in the United States. And where hundreds of health facilities and nonprofit organizations at the national level, like the American Childhood Cancer Organization, and at the local level, including USA Children and Women's Hospital, Operation Superhero conducted by the Mobile Police Department SWAT team, Camp Rapa Hope, and Joy of Life, all help children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicate their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. In Mobile County, we encourage all Americans to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country."
Thank you so much. I represent USA Health and our families and our kids who have fought these battles and are fighting these battles now, and on behalf of them, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
We appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Picture. Picture.
First on the list will be the presentation by Dana Foster.
Dana Foster.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's with great pleasure I present Mobile County Commission's 2020 Proposed Budget. As is the case with each year, the county receives more budgetary requests than available revenue. And fiscal year 2020's budget is no different. The county had available revenue of 153 million, and the budget requests came in at 160 million. So, the request exceeded revenue by 7.2 million. The 2020 budget was developed with three priorities. One was commission goals. The next were the needs of each district, and then finally, the requests of each budgetary department. Now, let's look at 2020 revenue. You have five columns. The revenues are listed by major category. We have the 2019 budget, the 2020 budget, the corresponding increase and decrease between the two, and the percentage increase and decrease. For fiscal year 2020, we're budgeting an increase of 2.2 million in taxes. That is generated by a combination of sales taxes, lodging taxes, and a slight increase in available taxes. Licenses and permits remain the same. Intergovernmental revenue, which is where simplified seller's use taxes were anticipated an increase of 1.4 million. Charges of services increased nominally by 1.27 percent. We have miscellaneous revenue that increased by 20 percent, which is due to a three-year look-back period of revenue received, as well as an anticipation of funds generated from two major federal programs. We budgeted 20 percent less than carryforward, so the total increase in revenue from 2019 to 2020 is $1,998,448, or a little over 1 percent. Next, look at expenditures. We have the same five columns. We're looking at expenditures by major category. As you can see, utility, the budget freeze increased 6.76 percent. And this is not necessarily related to an increase in costs, but we increased the budget to reflect actual expenditures. Personnel increase 6.05 percent, and we'll discuss that in more detail in a later slide, as well as a decrease in operations of 3.6 percent. Capital decrease 82 percent because last year we had one-time expenditure for the purchase of the county's new voting machines. Appropriations increased $1 million, and we will discuss that on a later slide. And debt service decreased by 1.2 million as a result of the county relinquishing some of its debt. Transfers operating out, operating transfers out increased 105,000. I'm often asked, what percentage of the county's budget is used toward personnel? And as you can see, this chart displays that 56 percent of the county's resources are allocated toward personnel, which includes benefits and wages. 26 percent is allocated to operations. Now, look at expenditures by function. General government expenditures are 35 percent, while public safety represents 49 percent of the county's budget. The remaining 16 percent is for all other categories. Now, let's discuss, get to the good part about the 2020 budget highlights. For fiscal year 2020, Mobile County Commission will be giving all employees a 7.5 percent cost of living raise. And this was truly a collaborative effort, commissioners. When this first came up in June, I posed this to the elected officials and department heads and got a complete buy-in, which is why you saw that operation expenses decreased 3.6 percent. They really got in and really supported me with this effort, and so I say kudos to all y'all for helping me. I appreciate it very much. Next, we have $500,000 of general fund, fund going toward the Mobile County Soccer Complex. We have $500,000 geared toward county support. We have $500,000 going to Lab People Stadium. $250,000 going towards the University of South Alabama. And we allocated $200,000 for 2020 census outreach. And finally, we allocated $125,000 to the Gulf Coast Challenge. The county exercises strong budgetary controls. The 2020 budget is definitely a little bit more ambitious, but it's definitely attainable. The county is a good financial manager, and we're very conservative. The county act has 27 percent of its annual budget in reserves. We also conduct monthly budget monitoring. I think some of you may have experienced that with the budget blocks, but hopefully we've all worked through that process. It was a great process. But we do monitor on a monthly basis, and those two things equate to budgetary controls. And so, just want to give the department heads and elected officials and citizens faith that we do monitor our budget, and in the instance, something happens that is out of, excuse me, beyond our control, we do know how to scale back if necessary. And with that, commissioners, that concludes my presentation of the highlights of the 2020 budget. The full budget will be available on our website, and if you need additional copies, please contact the PR department. Thank you. And now, it's time for Commissioner comments.
Good. Yeah. Thank you so much for that presentation and for the great job that you and your department have done, and for the great job that really everybody has done, all of our departments, all of our agencies. This was truly a team effort to be able to give this seven and a half percent raise to all of our employees. Our goal is to try to meet the, is to try to bring up to our market, the market standard for these different, these different positions, and to get within 93 percent of that, of the market for those particular jobs. And I think this really goes a long way to help put us there, and really, for the sheriff's department, I think it is above the 93 percent at this point in time. So, and hopefully, it will go a long way to help with recruitment and filling those positions that we really so desperately need to fill in public safety, as well as all of our positions that we're, you know, we're in a competitive environment, so, you know, we compete with other governmental entities, as well as private industry when it comes to retaining employees. So, we realize that, we recognize it, and I think this, certainly, I think this raise will, cost of living raise will help go a long way to be able to recruit and retain employees. So, we saw this as a priority, and we appreciate all of the support and help that everyone has come together to make this possible. And in my near 19 years in public office, I will say that I am, of all the budgets that I've either approved or infrequently approved, I'm most happy with this budget process and what has come out, what has just been presented with this budget this year, so.
Commissioner Lugood?
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Hudson's remarks and just add that I hope that staff knows that this, how much we appreciate you and appreciate the work that you do, appreciate the circumstances under which you have to work. When you're working for the public, sometimes it's not the most pleasant thing in the world, but we really do appreciate you. And this raise is just our way of saying that and saying that we recognize that you don't have the highest-paying jobs in town, if you will, but thank you so much for all you do in spite of, and for making people say really, really nice things about the county commission, because when they say them to me, I always want them to know that if it wasn't for our staff, we couldn't do it. So, thank you.
Amen.
When I enjoyed the commission in 2012, we had a shortfall of money. We had, we were looking at, at that time, they were looking at actually cutting hours back on employees. All I can say is we've come a long ways, baby, from then, and it's because of the employees. I got a phone call, someone asked me how hard it was to get the seven and a half percent pay raise, and I said it wasn't hard at all because we all agreed that it was going to happen, we just had to figure out how it was going to happen. And it didn't happen because we agreed to it, it happened because all these department heads and all these elected officials decided to down with their own budgets and trim where they could trim. When you're talking about a seven and a half percent pay raise, I don't know the exact dollar figure, but it would be huge. If we hadn't had the cutbacks in other areas, that was fat. I mean, it truly is fat, and we can do without it. And we're going to prove it this year, and we'll turn that fat into salaries. We can hire more people, better people. And most people don't realize that the county has downsized. 2012, we had 1,697 employees, now we're down to 1,620 and providing better service. And Sheriff Cochran has worked very hard putting our nose in it, making us understand how we have got to get in a fair market value situation working with these new employees. So, I feel like we're there. So, Sheriff, you can go back and start hiring now, right? Okay. Good.
He never stopped.
He could always hire, if he could find anybody to hire.
This should help, I hope.
Oh, by the way, I promised the mayor you wouldn't hire anybody from the city department. Yeah, I know. But thank y'all. I mean, this is a combined effort from everyone, and no one can take single credit for this. Good job for everyone. Okay? Glenn?
Commissioner, we're going to take number three out of order, and after you read the agenda item for the public hearing, then we'll adopt the budget.
Okay. Is anyone here called to order the meeting for the, read it here real quick. For the county budget fiscal 2019-2020, is anyone here to speak for or against it? Okay?
Number three, adopt county budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2020.
Some moved.
Second.
Third.
Number one, approve the list of names.
Some moved.
Second.
Number two, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance report for a period ending August 31st, 2019.
Do we have anyone here that's here to speak for or against the revenue expenditures and our change in the fund balance report? Okay. Move forwards.
Number three was adopted. Number four, authorize amending cotton county holiday schedule for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 to correct the date of Confederate Memorial Day from April 20th, 2020th to April 27th, 2020.
Some moved.
Second.
Number five, approve amending Mobile County Commission conference and meeting schedule to cancel conference on December 5th, 2019, and combining conference and meeting on December 9th, 2019.
Some moved.
Second.
Number six, approve a rescinding commission action in July 8th, 2019, minutes agenda item number two, approve contract with Sims Park Football Board in amount of $10,000 from District 2 funds.
Some moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve appointment of Jackson Thaggert to serve on the Mobile City County Youth Council, Council of County District 2 for a term of one year.
Some moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve cooperative agreement between the county, the Accounts Department of the 13th Judicial Circuit, and Mobile County Department of Human Resources, and the Department of Human Resources for the State of Alabama for implementation of the Child Support Enforcement Program for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $1,792,586.06.
Some moved.
Second.
Number nine, adopt a resolution authorizing Mobile County Commission to fix the cost and establish a lien on real property located at 5621 Bel Air Drive.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 10, authorize, adopt, and submit to 2018 caper to the U.S. Department of Housing and Development. Public hearing was held on September 20th, 2019.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 11, authorize extending term of sub-reception agreement with the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Mobile, Bill, Reading Sewer Improvements Project.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 12, authorize extending term of sub-reception agreement with the City of Citronelle regarding the Citronelle Recreation Center ADA Project.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 13, authorize sub-reception agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc., for an amount of $10,000 of Community Development Block Grant.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 14, authorize sub-reception agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc., for an amount of up to $5,000.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 15, authorize sub-reception agreement with Penelope House Family Violence Center for an amount up to $10,000.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve recommendation of Mobile County Board of Health to exempt 14 organizations which apply for and met criteria for one-year exemption from paying food and lodging tax.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve agreement with the University of South Alabama for an internship program for students in the School of Computing and Related Fields of Study for a period October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020.
Some moved.
Second.
18, approve renewal memorandum of understanding with administrative offices of courts to provide funding for an employee in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office assigned to process matters related to incarcerated persons to be paid from the Metro Jail budget.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve sponsorship with Hargrove Foundation, Inc., in amount of $2,500 from District 1 funds.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve professional service agreement with Neil Publishing in amount of $6,000 from District 1 funds.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve sponsorship with Cleon Jones, Last Out Dalkey Foundation, in amount of $1,500 from funds will be divided between District 1 funds in amount of 750 and District 3 funds in amount of 750.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 22 has been revised. Number 22 reads, approve CDP, should be 220-19, contract with Sims Women's Club, Inc., in amount of $500 from District 2 funds for its 2019 Christmas tour.
Some moved.
Second.
23, approve the sponsorship with Mobile Regional Senior Community Center Foundation in amount of $500 from District 2 funds for Night of Lights fundraising gala.
Some moved.
Second.
24, approve contract with Girl Scouts of Southern Alabama in amount of $3,550 from District 2 funds to benefit their in-school Girl Scout program.
Some moved.
Second.
25, approve application of Eminence Promotion LLC for special events retail license.
Some moved.
Number 26, approve amending the 2019 capital improvement plan to add project and estimated cost as follows. City of Satsuma upgrades to concession stands and restrooms at Wright Park and Lines Park for $100,000. This amendment creates project City of Satsuma upgrades to concession stand and restrooms at Wright Park and Lines in Satsuma, Alabama, allocates $100,000.
Some moved.
27, approve renewal of professional service contract with Susan J. Lee, MSRD/LD, to provide food service management consulting services at a flat rate of $60 per hour, not to exceed $10,000. This is for Strickland Youth Center.
Some moved.
Second.
28, approve renewal professional services agree with Pete Ross Austin to provide professional computer working, networking, and IT service in amount of $70,000. This is for Strickland Youth Service.
Some moved.
29, approve staffing agreement with Bay Nursing, Inc., to provide medical care for juveniles in amount of $100 per visit straight time and $150 holidays, and for a registered nurse and $40 per hour straight to 60 dollars holiday for registered nurse for a three-year period.
Some moved.
Has legal seen this contract? Has legal reviewed the contract?
I can't hear you, Commissioner.
I just said, has legal reviewed the contract for 29?
Jeff, you have to, I can't hear either one of you.
You did review it.
I did read through it, yeah. We did. I'm sorry, I just, I couldn't get everything.
All right.
Number 30, accept a grant award from Alabama Department of Youth Services on behalf of James Strickland in the amount of $1,025,440.
Some moved.
Second.
31, approve performance contract with The Bridge, Inc., to operate the Mobile County Transition Continuing Program in the amount of $1,025,440.
Some moved.
Second.
32, approve annual renewal in agreement with Heartland Payment Solution to Business as Heartland School Solutions for Child Nutrition Program Menu Planning Software Support Services in amount of $4,750.
Some moved.
Second.
33, accept a sub-grant award from the Alabama, from a DECA on behalf of Regional Highway Traffic Safety Division for the Community Traffic Safety Program Grant in amount of
Some moved.
Second.
34, accept sub-grant award for a DECA on behalf of Regional Highway Safety Division of Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, grant in amount of $364,990.169.
Some moved.
Second.
35, accept sub-grant from a DECA on behalf of the Regional Highway Traffic Safety Division for the 2020 ClickIt or Ticket Law Enforcement Campaign in the amount of $44,5797.
Glenn, for the benefit of time, can we book all these together?
The last three are sub-grant awards.
36, 35, 36, and 37?
We'll include all three in the motion to accept. Some moved.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. 38, approve contract at Liberty Learning Station in amount of $5,000 from District 3 funds to benefit the Super Citizen Program in Mobile County Elementary School.
Some moved.
Second.
39, approve application of Southern Bell Events for a special event and retail license.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 40 has a revision. It should read, approve grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs and Bureau of Justice Assistance for Project Safe Neighborhoods on behalf of the Sheriff's Office in amount of $30,000.
Some moved.
Second.
41, approve contract with Jill's Centec Consultants to provide professional engineering service for Gulf Island Causeway Shoreline.
Some moved.
Second.
42, approve issuing certificate of need for S. Feller Farms as a hauler to transport and dispose of blended raw seafood waste generated at the Gulf Coast Agricultural and Seafood Co. Processing Plant.
Some moved.
Second.
43, approve professional service contract with Lynn Young, MD, for provision of medical care for juveniles in amount of $32,000.
Some moved.
Second.
44, approve contract with Grand Bay Fire District in amount of $4,100 from District 3 funds to purchase two Conex container boxes for fire department training.
Some moved.
Second.
45, request.
And that was on 44, that's contingent on legal review. 44. Just wanted to note that's contingent on legal review. Forty-four. Just wanted to note that's contingent on legal review.
Forty-five, approve request of the Sheriff's Office to add internally purchased vehicle to their fleet as follow.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-six, approve adopting the amended Mobile County compensatory time policy.
Some moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve recommendation of University of South Alabama to appoint and reappoint members of the Board of Directors and of Mobile County Hospital Board as follows. Appoint Dr. Michael Chang for a term of four years, expires September 30th, 2023. Reappoint Dr. Bernard H. Ischel II for a term of six years, expires September 30th, 2025.
Some moved.
Second.
Before approving forty-eight, there is change on page 10, fifth item down.
I'm sorry, which one was the number?
It's on page 10, the fifth item down from page 10. Award bid, I'll read it. Award bid number 79-19, annual heavy-duty tires bid to Goodyear Tire Company for the Public Works Department. Number forty-eight, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Do we need to say as amended? Do we need to say as amended?
As amended.
Second.
Forty-nine, approve renewal of software agreement with Converge One in the amount of $2,992.50 for Mariki MR Enterprise License.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty, approve annual maintenance agreement with Business Systems and Consultants in the amount of $1,0916 for Canon CR180.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve professional services agreement with Think Think in the amount of $13,534.34 for backup storage.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Gulf Coast and Streets Ressurfacing.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, recommend approving license agreement between the county of Mobile and Mobile Real Estate Investment to occupy and use the surface only of a certain portion of right-of-way of Schillinger's Road South.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, recommend accepting hold harmless indemnity agreements for use of county-owned equipment from the following: City of Balabatri, City of Citronelle, City of Creola, City of Satsuma, City of Sims, Town of Mount Vernon, and moving the below-listed annual work orders to furnish labor and to perform weekend work for the following municipalities, labor to be respite of municipality.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-five, recommend approving the below-listed annual work orders to furnish labor, equipment, and materials as needed for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 for the following.
Some moved.
Second.
One quick question. The radio towers, do we ever get that switched over to the, but we're still going to do maintenance on the, like the maintenance, we're still going to do some of the grass work?
That's correct. The generators and stuff, they're going to handle, but the grass cutting, they've asked us to handle, and that's kind of like payment of using the system. They're not going to charge us for the system.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Number fifty-six, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement with Track 90 in amount of $2,400 from Orbicoat Loop West, Road West.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-seven, recommend approving preliminary and final plant of Lee Lee Division and approving preliminary and final plat of Full Moon Estates and approving preliminary and final plat of Houston Fam subdivision and approving preliminary and final plat of Beaver Land subdivision.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-eight, recommend approving preliminary final plat of Creekside Estates Phase One and approving preliminary plat only of Amelia Lake Phase Five.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifty-nine, consider wavering Section 421 and 71 of the Mobile County Subdivision Regulations and approving preliminary and final plat of replat of Cronio and Colley Estates.
Some moved.
Second.
Sixty, recommend approving final plat of Dunwood Phase Two subdivision, accepting road rights as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets: Old Causey Lane, White Bark Drive, Stone Pine Drive East, and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as affected said roads and accept the warranty deed of the right-of-ways.
Some moved.
Second.
Sixty-one, recommend authorizing advertisement of the proposed 2018 building code for four weeks in accord with Section 41-9-166.
Some moved.
Second.
And Commissioner, we have four add-ons. First one, approve right-of-way of entry permit granting the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Mobile ingress and egress to county-owned property in Pine Run area in connection with the CDBG project for sewer systems improvement.
Some moved.
Second.
Number two, approve closeouts of 2004 Capital Improvement Fund Bank account after final check for interest payment of $146.87 issued to the fund has cleared the bank.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, approve expenditure in amount not to exceed $35,000 for improvements to the old Government Plaza Restaurant location for building code upgrade necessary for the Health Department Regulations for food service operations.
Some moved.
Can we, can I get some background on what this is about?
I can tell you what I know, or, okay, this relates to the chicken salad chick operations. They were the only bidder that bid on the project that were interested. Their cost to do upgrades, they're going to pay for themselves, but this thirty-five thousand or a bit less is costed. And I had been asked for the candidate to bring the property up to basic, I'm looking at Tyler, basic health department regulations for restaurant operation, not unique to this franchisee chicken salad chick. Is that basically correct, Tyler?
That's right. It includes such things as hand-washed sinks, hot water heater, food prep sink, walling off an area in the adjacent room for their food storage and prep area, so.
So it's not really specific to chicken salad chick? Anybody who occupied the space with food service, that would be the requirements based on what the Board of Health, what their regulations require?
That's correct. Most of this is driven by the Health Department and their requirements for that sort of operation.
Would we be doing it if we weren't trying to accommodate chicken salad chick? I mean, it appears-
Well, obviously, if they weren't here, it would stay dormant. So the answer to that question would be, if it was, if it's current use, I would suspect not, but.
So can we spend public money for pretty much the benefit of a private party?
Well, if the commission feels that it serves a public purpose, the answer is yes. You know, we do have refrigeration equipment there from long ago. Some of it's obsolete and no longer usable, but these are not decals and unique for their operation. So I think the answer is yes, but we wouldn't be doing it if there were no restaurant operation being offered to that site, clearly.
Commissioner, the real problem, and I know you're aware of it, is our weather days and our jury members, they can't get out. They don't know the closest place to walk. They're just wandering in the streets trying to find somewhere to eat. So it, you know, that's motivation here, is the weather days, more than anything.
And I think probably they would argue that it is a public service. When you have inclement weather in employees in the building, when there's inclement weather, and they're unable to get out in it, then they have a limited amount of time. I think they would argue that it does serve a public service for them.
If our lawyer is making the call that this is public purpose?
Well, I, based on what Tyler has provided me from the Health Department, if it were unique to chicken salad chick, I would say no. But at the end of the day, the question of the commission, I think it closely meets the test. It's, I'd put that in letter form, but if it were unique to chicken salad chicks' unique operation or logoing or building their countertops and that kind of stuff, I would say no.
And chicken salad chick will be financing everything that's really unique to their operation, all their countertops, everything that's basically that they're bringing in for their operation, which if they leave, they would take all that with them.
The things would stay because they'll become fixtures.
Right. This is a permanent fixture.
As the agreement would read, right, Tyler?
So have we, did we do this for the prior restaurant on food service operations?
And the prior, the last restaurant that we found some good information on was from Starbucks, which was leased by Airmark under their whatever franchise agreement they have invested. Martha and I can determine, or I can determine the answer to that question is no. Starbucks and, or through Airmark invested, stated on the lease agreement $275,000, which does not appear to have come from county operations. Now, the back part was already there when they were there from the prior food service, and I couldn't determine what the county did for the prior food service operations back in the mid, late 90s.
But other food service operations have utilized what's already in the kitchen area. So they took advantage of, in kind way, of the refrigerator service, the freezer service, the sinks, the, you know, when Government Plaza was originally built, it was the county that invested money to build out a full-service restaurant. So, and I have no idea what the initial cost of that, but the county made that decision to invest in providing all those amenities for a vendor to come in and operate. So it's, there's no precedent, I think, being set by doing this.
Yeah, you're right. It did build it out, but I think that was an agreement with parade on how much the county was going to be paid, you know, for using this amenity that we were offering. But my question, you've answered my question. You, your meaning is that it is public purpose?
I think so. The tenant shall pay 10% of its gross receipts prior to sales tax, and as I had mentioned, Commissioner Hudson, this has evolved, and there will need to be a new formal written lease agreement between county and the franchisee, whatever her actual name is, be brought back to y'all at a later time.
I think there's a motion. I moved.
Second.
I'm a no.
Number four, approve professional services agreement for interior design related to consulting services with Jill Ross, doing business as Interior Concept for Design Services for Mobile County Government Plaza. Contract sec to final legal review and approval.
Some moved.
So, I've looked at the contract that was attached.
Well, there is the contract. It is not ready in its present form because it doesn't clearly state with, that's why it says, "Subject to legal review." Sufficient specificity what the agreement is. The concept is a $3,000 one-time retainer, and then the other word, based on the 21 items, not to exceed a $32,000 in chain number, and that agreement needs to be tweaked to better say what, the wording doesn't state, subject to my not feeling, how the wording ought to be reflected, so.
Well, I've looked at the contract. I mean, the first problem I had was that she, it would have this contract reported to the county engineer, which does, seems inappropriate. The other thing, I looked at the list of 21 things, and there's several things on there that I think we certainly need, and so I don't have any problem to, with that aspect of, it's just some things on there that I think we have contracted before previously. There's some things on there that step functions, I noticed one thing was to report to a vendor that they had the wrong hinge on a desk, and I can't understand why that wasn't done some time ago. So the concept of the contract, I don't have a problem with, it's the specifics that are troubling to me. And I don't mind, if we could agree today that we will work all of that out within the legal review process and that we can come back, we'll come away with an agreed-upon concept. I can vote on today, if it's, if I have to vote on it in the current form, I'd have to vote no. But that's not because I think everything in the contract is, is not appropriate. It's just, there's some things there that I think ought to come out.
I can clearly handle the contract. The items, one through 21, I'll leave that to the commissioners to decide what's the priority. I'd be happy to facilitate everything I can.
You know, I really, Tyler, who was facilities manager, ought to be in the loop on this. He knows what's already been done. He knows what we've already contracted for and paid for.
Well, actually, Tyler has been in the loop and will continue to be in the loop because he will have to work hand and glove with this consultant. The idea here is, we've identified, and I've been actively involved and actually looked at this and made suggestions about adding some areas that I think need improvement. But the building really hasn't been touched in 25 years until we had this consultant come on board and make recommendations and basically act as a general contractor, working in conjunction with Tyler to get some of these projects done. And there's quite a bit more to do, and if, you know, if you look around the building, it's, and really focus and pay attention on some of the things that need upgrading and need improvements, and, for instance, the rooms, the blue room and the room behind, you know, the auditorium, have been sitting derelict, and they're in disrepair. And, you know, I think they need, we need to focus on these areas and come in, and there needs to be a focus, but also there needs to be some continuity to some degree between different areas of the building. I mean, it's, and that's what you have an interior designer to come in and provide that vision, to help give you a scope of work, to give you the cost, and that's what this is about, to focus on these areas, to give us an idea of what would cost to bring this up, to renovate it, and do whatever work we need, just like we did with this auditorium, which I think looks 1,000% better than it did. And so, and then, once we get a scope of work, once we get an estimate on cost, then those will come back to the commission, and we can vote it up or down if we decide to move forward and take each area for improvements.
So the, I don't, I mean, I agree that there's, there's been a lot of things around here that need to be upgraded. What they're, we went through this before, and these are the, these are the kinds of things I don't want to happen again. I don't want us, I don't want this to be treated as almost like a blank check. If every single thing is going to come back to us before, I mean, to the entire commission, because my feeling in the last process was, we would be, we share, information would share, but one position, one commissioner was put in a position of having to be the final word, which I don't really think is an appropriate role.
That is to correct this. This is her authorization to move forward in these different areas she's identified and do planning, and once that planning's done, that information will come back to the commission to decide yea or nay to move forward.
So, if you read it, it looks like a contract to walk around, look, and find some projects. That's, you know, just kind of walk around and then see what needs- That's, you know, just kind of walk around it and see what needs to be done, and that could, I can just hear the cash register running on that, it frightens me.
It can't exceed the amount, the amount J. gave, the 32,000, and without coming back to the Commission, and it may not be that much, that-
Thirty-two thousand, one eighty-five is the max, based on what's been proposed, plus the 3,000.
But there's some caveat, there's some language on some of them that say, I found one, that if something additional, let's see, a $650 minimum, that it can exceed that, that's written into item 21, which is, seems to be the catch-all. So it's that kind, I just, I just want us to have some control. I want the lines of communication to be well laid out, I want the who reports to whom, how the final decision made, those are things that I think we have to nail down in this contract because we just weren't able to do that well last time.
Well, to me, I think it's pretty clear that this consultant will report to our facilities manager. You know, I plan to be involved because I've been involved in the work that's been done so far, and I'm interested, you know, I'm, I like to be involved, but she will report to Tyler, and Tyler will be giving her direction. This is not carte blanche, this is not open-ended. She's identified as best she can how many hours it will take on each one of these projects at a maximum amount not to exceed. I think that's fair, that's a fair way. If it should take more time than what she's programmed in here, then she would have to come back, or we would have to come back to allow that, but there is a chance it may not take that much time, but we had to give her some leeway because you don't always know what, how much time something takes until you actually get involved in talking to vendors and trying to do design work.
So what about the things that, if I were negotiating a contract that I will completely remove, how do we handle that?
If, do what? I'm sorry?
There's some things on here that I think ought to come off entirely.
Well, I think we have a motion on the floor to accept the contract. If you want to try to amend that, you know, that's your prerogative. I'm satisfied, I'm willing to move forward as is.
But there's no other projects outside the projects that are listed on this 21, 21, right? 21 different ones?
Correct. Not unless they come back to the Commission in an addendum to add. If, say, if one of the, if you come up with an idea, well, we go, we need to do this, we need to do that, then, and it's not on this list, then it's got to, we've got to come back and vote on it again.
You know my interior decorating skills, I have no input.
Well, we'll ask your opinion anyway.
We have a motion?
I have a motion, made a motion.
Second.
No.
I'll still make the changes that everybody agreed to and-
Right. Right, it's contingent, the motion is contingent upon final legal review.
I understand Commissioner Leggett's comments outside of the 1 through 21.
And on item three, we need to make sure that that was paid for under the old agreement.
So, what was that again, Commissioner? Okay. Number three, she's saying she thinks it might have been paid for under the old agreement. I don't have a list before me, so I can't argue it one way or the other.
I think Tyler could help us answer that question.
Okay.
We'll check on it, I understand the question.
Thank you, Tyler's help. All right. Glenn?
Number sixty-two, Commissioner announcements and or comments.
Commissioner Leggett?
I don't have any.
All right, real quickly, we've got three retirees from the License Commission. We have Robert, is it Gouldby? I hope I pronounced, I get that right, good for me. Nina Vickers, and also Stephanie Taylor, excuse me, Stephen Taylor, Camp 98, Engineering Public Works. Wow, 27, 17 years, 16 years, that's a lot of years. Fill away today.
Congratulations. Best wishes.
Yeah. Do we have, do we have anything else?
Commissioner, we have engine care after the meeting.
Correct.
Number sixty-three, approved request for motion to adjourn until October 14th, 2019.
Some moved. Second.
I'd like to call to order the Mobile Engine Care Board Meeting, September 23rd, 2019.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of August 26th, 2019.
Some moved. Second.
Number two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Engine Care Fund at August 31st, 2019. Funds available, $176,334.56.
Some moved. Second.
And number three, approved request for motion to adjourn.
Some moved. Second.
Have a great week. Thank you.